Ready to start?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna be starting our Lynn Zoning Board of Appeals meeting scheduled for tonight, June seventeenth, seven P. M. If we can have a roll call, please.
Member Christopher?
Here.
Member Maggio?
Here.
Member Olson?
Present.
Member Crowitz?
Present.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Present.
And Gilway?
And Gilway, present. All right, we have a forum. Um, before getting into cases for tonight's cases, um, I would entertain a motion related to the past meeting minutes.
Motion.
All right, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye or aye. Right.
Perfect.
We can get started with the first case that we have on our end, and that is case one zero one one zero. Is that Federal Street?
Yes.
Yes, Federal Street. We can have the release.
Federal Street, Lynn, Massachusetts, parcel number zero three seven two six six zero one six. Petitioner Charles Pacios, manager of Forty Federal Street Holdings LLC, one thirty Atlantic Avenue Swamp Scott, Massachusetts, zero one nine oh seven zoning board of appeals case ten one one ten. To vary pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty, Section Ten, the provisions of the City of Lynn's own ordinance to allow the parking of registered and unregistered motor vehicles in municipal uses requested by the City of Lynn, including the Lynn Fire Department parking of vehicles, as well as storage of towed vehicles, temporary carnivals, and other municipal uses permitted by the owner. The variance requests requires the zoning board of appeals to specifically find owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shaped topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Olson. Um, we did receive a letter related to this particular petition dated June fifth from our Economic Development Industrial Court. Um, if we can have a reading of that, and I see also Mr. Caldwell is here. Um, would you like to speak some words? I know that you're pretty busy. Um, were you going to talk something on the record outside of the letter? Yeah, um. Yeah, we're gonna do the, your deposition or uh words after reading this and then after hearing Attorney Vitale. So if we can have a reading of the letter just for context.
Yeah, this is a letter regards to the Federal Street petition. I am writing to your honorable body regarding the petition of Charles Pacios. Who is seeking a variance for the land located at, on Federal Street. We are writing in opposition to this petition as the property is not zoned for auto storage, yet hundreds of vehicles are parked there in violation of zoning regulations, creating a public, creating a serious public safety hazard and undermining the city's vision for land use and development in this area. Mr. Pacios has represented to the city that he is the manager of the property. Despite my, multiple attempts, we are unable to determine who the owner of the property is. This has squatted our efforts to work collaboratively collaboratively with the petitioner. This letter is being submitted on behalf of the development team. The team is made up of Mayor Jared Nicholson, the ward counselor, and council president Jay Walsh, director of Lynn Housing, director of community development, director of E D I C, director of planning, and the director of I S D. Several years ago, when the Market Basket project was completed, an agreement was made that the city would complete infrastructure improvements, and subsequently the lot in question would be developed. The city completed over one million dollars in infrastructure improvements, yet that large seven acre lot remains undeveloped. The amount of cars on this lot are causing major safety issues to the surrounding neighborhoods. Last week, the Lynn police responded to a call because several tractor trailers were causing huge traffic jams delivering cars to that lot. This property is not zoned for auto storage. We respectfully ask that the petition be denied sincerely, James Caldwell, M. B. A. On behalf of the Lynn Development Team.
Thank you, Mr. Olson, and that'll be, um, put into the records. Um, and if we can have the petitioner, um, come forward and let's talk about the case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Attorney Vitale. Uh, I represent the petitioner who's seated here, Charles Pacios. Uh, also this evening is, uh, Alan Janeski. Uh, you'll hear from both of them. Uh, Mr. Janeski is the tenant of the current site, uh, and is involved with attacking the vehicles here. Uh, I don't know whether you bought a set of plans.
Sure.
I don't know. Did, did you get a set of plans as for a lot?
Um, we can have those also.
Yeah, I think there's about eight sets. I think it'll make it easier for everybody to get oriented. Uh, let me say at the outset that if, uh, the, uh, initial petition was filed by, uh, Jim Moore, who's a, an attorney, uh, very knowledgeable in zoning. He handed me the sour potato, but that's all right because I think that, uh, he, in his request, has, uh, characterized, uh, the actual uses. What I wanted to say to you, uh, is a couple of things. And then you can speak directly to the individuals who are, uh, uh, here, including the petitioner. Uh, the first is, as you look at the, uh, the plan, is that, uh, Federal Street, uh, is a two-way street, and I used this before to say it's actually a private way. But why I'm saying it's a two-way street, I think that what we're talking about is, uh, what would benefit the petitioner and the owners, and what would benefit the City of Lynn? And, uh, it's not a one-way street, it's a two-way street, and that's why this is a, a difficult question for you all to decide because there are multiple uses. But as I understand it, there's one set of rules. And this only, this doesn't apply to private individuals or private property owners, it applies to the City of Lynn. And so whatever regulations there are, I affect not only the petitioner, but the other users, including the City of Lynn. Um, with that said, uh, I want you to also pay close attention to what I would say is the real problem, which is the reality of the situation and the perception. The perception is somewhat rightly so, that there was a public safety issue, but that, that got resolved. That's not the real issue. What I'm asking you to think about is what are the real issues? And, and certainly who the real owner is an, an real issue because the record owner is seated here. And at the end of the day, if you know anything about this site, and I, I recall long ago, uh, being when it was General Electric, and it was, I think, called the Measurements Factory. They did things that created instruments to measure things. I actually been. Um, what resulted is that that use ended. But what didn't end is the effect on the soil conditions. And there are two way URLs, that's called Activity Use Limitations. Uh, and you may see some of the evidence of this on the existing site that limit the kinds of uses that can be there because of environmental concerns. And with those environmental concerns, people who are prudent take steps to protect themselves. And so the current status of the environmental law is that if you're the owner of the land, you own it. And if it's bad, you own it. You own the problem. But if you're the operator, you're not the owner, and you're not responsible. So prudent people would, uh, take on the task to ensure that they didn't inherit a potential multimillion dollar name for an environmental solution. So I think we have soil conditions that are certainly affect this land. And also, the land's unique. Looked at the D, which I did, and I, and you can look at it and, uh, and see the same things. You're gonna see references to restrictive covenants of the City of Lynn, easements with the City of Lynn, the Sogus Railroad. Um, you're going to see a variety of things that make this parcel not only unique, but limited what can and cannot be done there. And part of the background and history is this that the present users haven't really changed what they have been doing. What's changed is when it was the G, it was industrial. And at some point, it became zoned business. And then subsequent to that, even though if you go down, uh, upstairs to look at the map, it says that this lot, uh, is in the business zone. But if you look at what the assessors have on the field card, they say it's the light industrial, and the assessor's right because about two years ago, after the map had been done, it was rezoned industrial. It was rezoned industrial in the hope to attract, and the city does need more industrial spaces. But then again, on June the ninth of this year, it was changed to become R and D. And so one of the questions I have for you is that when Mr. Moore filed this, um, I think it was industrial, but as I stand here today, it could well be R and D. But the real problem is that what has brought us here today are complaints that there is not what they call non-accessory parking of vehicles. And so, as you can understand, if I were, uh, running one of the dealerships that's on the Lynn Way, I might have my showroom, and then I might park vehicles that are registered or unregistered, but they're accessory to my business, which is in the showroom, I'm selling automobiles. But I challenge you to look at the Lynn's own ordinance. You'll find for me on the table of uses where that kind of parking is allowed anywhere in the city. But strangely enough, as I walk through and over to here, I go by a church that has a paid parking lot, a tax exempt church. I go by a site that has a parking lot across from the post office. That parking lot might have been accessory to a restaurant that no longer exists, but it continues to operate as a for-profit parking lot. And so the question is, where can you go with that use? And the determination was probably nowhere except to you. That's how you got handed the hot potato. Because someone's gotta decide where is this an allowed use? But what compounds it is, they want you to throw the baby out with the bathwater. Because if my client can't have issues, then the City of Lynn can't have issues. So let me tell you about, and you're gonna hear firsthand from some of these folks, who uses the lot? Drive through the city now, and you'll see a sign that says Carnival at seven thirty eight at twenty five Western Avenue, so the front where the fire station headquarters is. That Carnival's on this lot. Now, you get a special permit, you can have a Carnival, I suppose, anyway. But can you have a special, have a Carnival at a place that charges you nothing, you use the property? Uh, and what evolved as a charity, Help Us Out Once, has now become Four Carnivals here. That's a use. You're gonna hear from Mr. Janeski that when the, uh, cannabis store opened with the old Tony the Florist site on Western Avenue, the lower end of Western Avenue, uh, in close proximity to the fire station, they needed parking. And they entered into arrangement to park for the cannabis shop on this lot. You're going to hear that the fire station property does not provide parking for the firemen who are working their shift and stay overnight at the station. But this lot does provide parking for the members of the fire department. You're going to hear that from December, I think it's four months, there are no parked cars there. Why? Because the City of Lynn uses it as the toll road to park cars. And they use it when there's a severe storm for snow storage. I don't know, you know, how that arrangement came to be, but that's the facts. That four months of the year, the City of Lynn has access, is the toll storage ad, and for the storage of snow. And when the Hibernians have their five mile load race, and you know where the Hibernians are on, on the lower end of the Federal Street? They need parking for the people who are gonna run in the race. They park in the lot. And if you look at the map and you look at the lot, you're gonna see one other thing that's strikingly strange. Is the, the roadways that you see are not public ways, they are private ways. And between Center Street and Federal Street, as you leave Market Basket, there is a private way. This lot ends on the right-hand side of, uh, that private way. And then what's on the left-hand side? Let's see, they park landscaping trucks, they park vehicles. And I don't think that parking lot is accessory to the, uh, old neighborhood production. The old neighborhood's got its own lot somewhere. So what is this really about? This is why I'm saying to you, you gotta separate uh, perception and reality. The reality is that I know when I go get my coffee in the morning at Market Basket, I'd say my experience is, they don't need the latest Lynn WhatsApp to reach out to Hispanic people. Go look at the people who are hardworking at the Market Basket. There's probably two or three hundred people or more that work at Market Basket. And how did Market Basket get there? And then who goes to the Market Basket? People like me. I'd say thousands of people in Lynn go to the Market Basket. So when people say, we don't know who the owner is, look at the big seventy-five thousand square foot building. Those are the people who bought Market Basket there. Those are the people who have lease on this land. These are the people who have control. So they, they're known. That's a red herring. The owners are known. Unfortunately, right now, there's some turmoil, corporate turmoil at Market Basket. But clearly, ultimately, that family, the Mullers family, they're the ones who are the ultimate decision makers. And so how is this project that's before you, which is really about packing non-accessory vehicles, standing in the way of development of the City of Lynn? If in fact it becomes R and D, then there are new table of uses. If it stays industrial, there's the old table of uses. I can't find any table of uses that allows this kind of activity. So we hand you because you are the one agency that can grant relief. And part of my concern about the future of this lot is, is assessed right now at three point six million dollars. It's a very high assess. Do you think the city's gonna assess it at three point six million if it's an empty lot? I don't even know how under what they call capitalization, given the income that's derived, which is really things on the dollar for the use of the land right now, if they can justify three point six million valuation. Part of this is, you remember the movie The Field of Dreams? If you build it, they will come. Well, development doesn't work that way. Development doesn't work that way. You don't build a five-story building and hope somebody comes and fills it up. Part of it is the marketplace determines what there are for demands. The uses determine what the highest and best uses. Is this the highest and best use? Absolutely not. You will hear from the people who are there. They can be gone in sixty days. As I stand here today, if you think that they can build and bring a life science business to the City of Lynn in the next sixty days or the next three years, these people will be gone. But if they're gone, and nothing replaces them, what has happened is we got an empty lot. An empty lot that can't be used, which I think, and I've argued this before, uh, that if I can't use my lot, then it's, that's a hardship right there. There's gotta be some use I can use it for. So you're telling me, okay, you can use it for R and D. What am I gonna go to Kendall Square and kidnap somebody and bring him to Lynn? That isn't the way the marketplace works. So what I hope you hear from the people who are better, uh, informed than I and, and more knowledgeable is why it is and how it was, we got to this particular, uh, situation. Uh, it's evolved like many things in the City of Lynn. When they had gentleman's agreement, you let us park city cars there because we have no place to put we let us pile snow there. And these people are responsible citizens. This isn't the only property that either of these two own. And I think they have a reputation in many ways. I've dealt with them, others have dealt with them. They're recognized as doing things in investing in land and creating jobs in land. There are people who are Linners who work on this lot. They work on this lot. They'll be gone. There'll be no jobs for them. Uh, I know we had this problem in the waterfront district. Was created as a district and not as an overlay. And, uh, I remember Counselor Capano, then State Representative Capano. He, he understood when we created where there was Lynn Lumber, the Lynn Business Park. He wanted something that produced revenue today, created jobs today, not some vision that may, 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 uh, may never come into fruition. And so this is employing Lynn people right now. This is providing a need to be fulfilled for people who are in business. And you'll hear that directly from the people who, uh, operate and own it. Uh, I just wanted to say to you that I think they put you in a difficult position. Uh, and I have great respect for Jim Moore, but people look at th- these issues and, and find different solutions. So what you're really being asked for is this. That this is a use, they say, that's not listed anywhere. And they're right. They're right. And they say it's parking of non-accessory vehicles. What that means is that the principal use isn't like across the street, the example I gave you of a, 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 an auto dealer on the Lynn Way. But at the same time, I can point to other places in Lynn. I can point to, uh, how it all came to be. There was a little guide shack in a business district. You can have an office, but this would be fiction. This would be, this is what I'm saying to you about reality and perception. Could somebody make an argument that, okay, that's my office, and I'm in the business of dispatching vehicles to Logan Airport? And because of that, I need a place to park the cars that are accessory to send them there. Or I have a class two dealer's license, and I need to prepare cars and take cars that I want to, uh, sell or trade. Right now, look, look up car backs, look up some of, now the used car business has become online. The conditions the City of Lynn places on the used car deal an hour that you don't necessarily have to have a physical place because it's online. And the vehicles, they pick them up, they drop them off, but they don't do it the same way that traditionally they did. So part of what the hope for is with this new zoning is, is that it closes the gap between past practice and new technology and addresses those kinds of issues. And I, I hope it does. I represent people. I think I was here with you folks with the guy that did the key fobs and did the computer. But they told me how to have auto repair, but auto repair wasn't allowed in the district, but all he was doing was these. So, and then I, I bought the first Jiffy Lube, but it was Jiffy Lube, now it's Valvoline. And when I did, I think I told you then, I tell you now. They, they looked through the table of uses. And here's what they found, oil filling station in Lubritoria. So it's hard when the, the ordinance and the uses are dynamic, but the document is static. So, so this is a good step, and I, a hopeful step. And I'm hoping that by zoning something R and D that will do attract, uh, those kinds of life science things. But let me just tell you my own personal experience. My son-in-law, I can't figure out quite what he does, but he's got the greatest gig in the world. He goes to work one day a week, Kendall Square, which is the sort of hub of all this. Um, since the pandemic, he's never been to Kendall Square, but one day, only recently, one day a week. But when he goes there, he tells me it's like a ghost town, not what it was before the pandemic, and certainly not a booming industry. So that's my offshore observation of, of the, uh, the world of life science. But I've taken enough of your time, but I think it's unfair to you honestly. To have you sit there and sit in judgment when they can't show me, and I can't tell you, this was filed when it said it was industrial. As I stand here today, I think it's R and D. But when it began, it was business, but that was before it used to be industrial, and then it became business. So I don't, I find this real I bank is now the Bank of America. I've been at the same bank for like fifty years. But there've been like nine different owners. I, I didn't, I just walked across the street to the bank. It went from uh, Bank of Boston, First Essex. Now, it's, maybe someday there'll be like three banks, Bank of America, Chase, U. S. Truck, whatever. I haven't changed, they did. And so the activity on this lot evolved. It evolved because people thought they were doing the right thing. And now, because of some problems, acknowledged problems, which I believe have been solved. No one wants a public safety problem. And the car carriers did create an issue. And you'll hear from Mr. Janeski how that was solved. The car carriers, and, and the number of cars was, was the perception. They, it looked like overwhelming. But now there's a hole in the middle of the donut where the car carriers come in, offload, so they're not on the street. So it's a good faith attempt to address problems, to have shared responsibility, so Federal Street is a two-way street. You just can't ask the owners to do this, do this, and allow this for the city, and then tell them, you can't do this, you can't do this, and you can't do that. That's a one-way street. And so I want you to hear from, and I would like to have Mr. Janeski, who can give much better information about the nature of the, uh, Avis and, uh, rental car businesses, the ebbs and flows. Because the vehicles that are there are all registered, basically all new. And there are vehicles that they take the plastic wrapping off, they prep, and then when the media rises, they take the vehicles from the lot to the airport. And that, that, that's it. Those are registered cars, they're brand new. There's a security system. There are ten to twelve people, Linners, who work at the lot now. They're gonna be, couldn't be many, many more. But Alan, why don't you come up and, and I think, let him have a few minutes to explain the operation, how he got into it. He'll answer any question you have that relates to the current use, which is being complained about.
So that, that's great. And, but I just want one clarifying here, Attorney Vitale, you mentioned that the perceived issues and that they were resolved, and we'll have more context on that. Can, can you just give me an overview of what those issues that were being voiced? Because I'm trying to keep track here. Uh, what were the issues?
I think I've addressed most of them. They'll kick me if I forgot some stuff. But let Alan talk to you about how the lot operates.
Watch your contact, I would like, please.
Alan?
Uh, I got a quick question.
Yeah.
Put your name and address, please.
I just want some, some clarification here. So I think you had mentioned that you were un, unaware that there might be oversight in the, uh, in the zoning ordinance in terms of, you know, being silent on, on accessory parking. I'm looking at what I believe is the most recent draft, and it is not left out. It is actually explicitly prohibited uh, for non-accessory.
Well, that's Tell me where it's allowed.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Nowhere, right?
And so accessory truck parking is allowed by special permit and all.
I, I couldn't find, I didn't say it wasn't there. I said it wasn't allowed. I couldn't find where it was allowed. Meanwhile, I drive by places every day where I see this activity going on. And, and I think that's undeniable. I, I'm asking you to use your eyes, use your common sense, and say, what, what is this? Why this one and not the other ones? And the thing that really, really, really troubles me is this. And I talked with the attorney for Market Basket.
Thank you so much.
And I asked him what he thought. I said, well, if this can't be allowed, doesn't it apply to the city as well? And he said, yes. So do we wanna tell the firemen they can't park there anymore? No. Do we wanna tell the City of Lynn, go find another place to park your vehicles for four months? No. But there can't be two sets of rules. And that's what they put you in there for. They're saying, you decide, all or none. What I'm saying to you is I think that's unfair. I think you need assistance. And I honestly don't know the answer to do we apply the zoning ordinance that was in effect when it was applied, uh, the application was made? Do we apply the new one? But the act, I don't. But the last, I don't know the answer. But let Alan speak to the moose, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Just, I know you wrote it, but if you can also state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Good evening. My name's Alan Janeski, and I live at 154 Windway at Seaport Landing. A few years ago, I have a business over on Bennett Street. And I've been over there for 35 years, Atlantic Liquidators. A lot of you may know of us because a very large amount of the furniture in this building has come from us. We liquidate pre-owned, high-end office furniture. This table looks pretty familiar. But so a few years ago, I got involved with Sixth Car Rental. And I have a company called O G Vehicle Services LLC, and I'm the manager. So we went over to the, most of it's at the airport. You rent the car, you bring it in. We take it, my people take it, and we get it prepared, do whatever it needs to be done to be re-rented. We got a good reputation while we're over there, and we were approached by Avis. And that was just recently, a few months ago, maybe five, six months ago. Then, in the meantime, with Sixth, we've been renting a portion of the lot over there. Usually, it's about a quarter of the lot. Every once in a while, March, April, May, June, it's a busy time. And it would go a little more, up to half the lot, three quarters. Avis approached us, and Avis is a little larger than Sixth. And as they fill the lot, this happens to be a unique year. And because it's every three years, not only do they have April, May, June, but they also have cars coming off lease and going on lease. So we had a situation where we had a few more cars than expected. We have nothing. We stayed away from Federal Street, which was a little, it's a busier street. And we utilized Center Street, and that's where the gates are, to enter the lot. We'd only have the most three or four car carriers throughout the day, all right? But they had the lot three full, and the car carriers would come in on Center Street, unload, load. And we were made aware that that was unacceptable by the city. And so we contacted Avis and said, we cannot fill the lot. You must do everything inside the lot. So car carrier would come, go into the lot. It looks a little worse than it is because it's the whole perimeter of the lot that has cars. The center is the big car carriers. It's going to be a large area to come in and do their work. So that's what we did. And we do whatever. If we're made aware of something that's unacceptable, we attend to it. We have people, a lot of people from Lynn who work for us, and we have others. And we shuttle the car, we shuttle them in, they drive the cars out to the airport once they're prepped and the plates are put on and all that. And yeah, it's just a controlled situation. It's the police, the city fellow brought the police over. When the police came, his issue wasn't a safety issue as far as anything, but the car carriers making the turn, which they come out now, they go out a certain way and make the turn. So we attended to that. Whatever had to be done, had to be fixed, that's what we did. During the next few months, it's very little. That's why when we first initiated, when we first rented the property, we were told by the owners that we could only have a 60-day lease because you don't know what's coming. This is nothing compared to if somebody wants to develop the lot and they need it in out in case they go out of customer or someone to do that, to come in there. So that's what we did. We were on a 60-day. And when I gave a lease Avis, I made it 60 days. The same licensing agreement with the same thing. So we understand, and they understand, that if the goldy moose comes to develop the lot and rent the lot, that at any point, 60 days later, we ought to be gone. And it's, like I say, we attend to anything that's got to be done. And this is just a process. Most of the year, there'll be a quarter of the cars in there. Right now, we've got, at the high point, we counted 590 cars. Now we've got about 200, 250 in there. And that's what, after the carnival leaves, they'll be spread out a little, but it'll be basically the same, 200, 300, 400 cars. But again, around the perimeter. So maybe it looks a little crazy over there, but it's not. We need people, you know? And if anybody wants, we need, probably we have 30, 40 people now between here, the airport, and around. We need more. They want us to do more and more and more. And, you know, at my other business, we have all Lynn people working. I'd love to have local people. And it's just a plus for everybody. Anytime anybody's got an issue, you know, we don't work late at night. We don't want to disturb this residential over there. We don't want to disturb anybody. And it's pretty controlled. It's, you know, the cars are not stored there. It's not like they're, the term store, you know? It's not like they're there, and they're there for months. They're just in and out. They come in, they prep them, take the plastic off, put the plates on, get them ready to go, and they're gone. We have people who drive them to the airport. And you'll notice on McClellan Highway, there's the Avis facility over there. So they go over there. There's lots on Charger Street, and there's other places that they spread them out to. They take them out. And that's basically the operation. And it's just, I understand it looked crazy. And over there, the first couple of car carriers that came, we would rent the garage over the F M B T A in the beginning of Market Street, the NBA garage. But the state inspector mixed that because it wasn't, you know, against these issues. So that's when we gave us over to Federal Street.
Can I ask a question just to clarify what you actually do? So vehicles come in, whether by train, by shipping, by whatever, and they come to that?
The vehicles, there are vehicles that they purchase from, I don't know where they go, very honestly. They beam in on car carriers.
Yeah.
Right, some, and some are driven in.
So are some of these all new, or some of them are new?
They're all basically new. But some, at this high time, all right? The brand-new cars would come in on a car carrier, and we would let them take the plastic. There's three companies working in there, two others as well as mine. And they have the keys, they put the plates on because they're all registered, and they take the plastic off the top and make sure they're, they open the trunks and check them. I don't know what some of them do. We drive, basically, we drive. So my people will take that car, a brand-new car, or within the three years, because they get rid of them within three years. So some of these cars that filled the lot were going back, and we would drive them back to another facility where they would be off-lease. And they would go, at that point, I don't know how they take them to the auction or wherever they go.
So you're not handling the back end of it when they're coming off, off the fleet? You're just dealing with the front end of the fleet?
Well, it's, I am not 100% sure. I just know they take them, when they take them in to my place, they bring them in. And then they get a new car, and we drive it over to McClellan Highway or one of their other facilities. That's all we do for Avis budget. That's all we do for them, is drive. And we do security. We have 24-hour security. We have somebody at the gate. All the gates are locked except the one. And we have someone 24 hours a day sitting there. So there's no, there were the moose way back of, you know, breaking in and drugs and needles and stuff. It's none of that. We have two security robot machines on the facility. When they were on one side, and they have a little breaking, right? They request removal, we put them where they want them. We have live security at the gate 24 hours, two shifts. So basically, we drive. We just hire people to drive the cars and...
So can you just clarify for me? Because I'm just getting really confused. Are you the owner of the property? Or are you just a businessman who's renting the property from?
I am renting the property. I rent the property. As I say, we have a licensing agreement, but it stipulates 60-day, it will end in 60 days. I know the city looks for development and all that. The money they get for the packing is...
And who is your agreement with?
My, it's for 40 federal trust. 40 federal real estate trust.
So your role in it is, you don't have any operational control over these companies that are operating these businesses on this property, correct?
As far as?
Like, let's say the city comes to you and says, we want you to do something differently because we think you're in violation of our zoning, or whatever the case may be. Can you tell Avis?
Well, they've, it's, no, they've come to us. They came to us and asked us not to use Center Street, all right? So I instructed my people, and I called Avis because I'm renting to them. But I called Avis and says, we cannot use Center Street for any offloading and loading. So they cleared out the whole center of the lot, and the cars, the car carriers come in. Not only they come in, it's not like they come in and go out. There's one gate. So they come in, there's nothing really little for that big car carrier to turn around. There's also, if you know the lot, it's the fire station at the end. And there's a whole section next to it on Federal and Western Avenue. We do not rent to them that. And we held it back because we get a lot of calls. The Hibernia called us, the Cambodian community called us. They have a road race, they have something going on, and they need parking for 20 cars or 30 cars. And we donate to them. We keep that empty so that they can use that. And the carnival's another one where, you know, it's a benefit to the city. So we make arrangements. My contract with Avis specifies a whole page of dates that the carnival's going to come in, it's four times a year. They come in from April 15th, from the 7/15th. It's specified on my contractual Avis that the city tow lot is going to be two-thirds of this. It's a little over half, maybe two-thirds, 60% of the whole lot, the entire lot they need for the tow lot. So we accommodate. Whatever's got to be done, we do.
So the prep isn't actually done on the Federal Street property?
Well, you're calling it the Federal Street property, and that's probably the correct name. But it's got Federal Street between that and the Market Basket. And then on the other side is Center Street.
Yeah.
And Center Street, which is not even close to the traffic that Federal Street has, that's where we come in, we drive the cars out that way. The gates are on that side.
So where is the actual prep happening? Like ripping off plastic?
Oh, that's in the lot.
In the lot?
Yeah, that's inside the lot.
So it's done with those materials?
Oh, it's taken whatever's got to be done. They recycle them. It's, there's no debris at all. It's...
Is there a dumpster on site? How do you transport that material?
You know something? My people don't do it. I go to the lot at least once a day when I'm in, you know, in town. At least once a day. The last few days, I was there three, four, or five times because we had to get ready for the carnival. So I was there three, four, or five times a day. I'd never seen anything on the ground. They take it, they put it in their van, and they take it out. It's not a dumpster. We don't have a dumpster hanging around.
Are your people or?
There's three companies in there, all right? One of them does most of that stuff. It's called Fleet Logic. And like I say, I've been there when they...
You, or did they have a contract with you?
No, I only have a contractual Avis for the lot.
So they also contract with Avis?
They contract to do just that, the cars. All right, they take the plastic off, they clean the windshields, they put the plates on, they come with, when the car comes in, the cars come in, they bring a stack of plates like that, they put them all on, they get them roadworthy and take it out. And I've been there many times when they're there doing it. I've never seen any debris, anything. And there's never any in the lot. You know, they take everything with them.
Who's the other company that's involved in this property? You said there was three, two other companies?
That work for Avis.
You're right.
Yeah.
Who is the other company?
Fleet Logic.
Oh, Fleet Logic, okay.
Yes. But they don't rent the lot, but go ahead.
That's just one. That's just one?
Yeah, I don't know. Honestly, I don't know the other, the name of the other company. I don't have a lot to do with them, except when they prep the cars, we've taken the cars that were told over to McClellan or the airport. Yeah, so they're a separate entity. And if you go, if you go in the lot while they're there, over there, it's not, it's not crazy, you know? It's very controlled and, you know...
So car carriers, the actions on Center Street, they pull out and they go toward Western?
They, no, they go out and take a left on that behind, between the lots, the private way or whatever that is.
And what are your operating hours?
Well, we're there, we're actually working there. We have people there usually during the daytime. And it's, it can be 8 o'clock to 4 o'clock or 5. We don't do anything. There's residential there, so that was kind of obvious not to get into. And you know something? If you didn't look out your window, you wouldn't even know we were there. It's quiet.
Okay.
Any other questions before? I know that we also have Mr. Patzios, if he'd like to also share some words.
Okay, thank you so much. That's Louis. Good evening. Charlie Patzios, 130 Atlantic Ave, Swampscott, Mass. I'm the manager of the trust. Boy, where do I begin? I guess from the beginning. The lot was acquired from General Electric back, I think, in 2010, maybe? Somewhere in that area, I don't remember exactly. I hadn't originally negotiated purchasing a lot for two other entities prior to, and I'm a commercial broker, prior to seeing the failures of why General Electric didn't want to sell the property. And so at that point, I switched from the position that I was in as a broker, and I became the buyer of the property, acting as the negotiator with General Electric. And the reason that General Electric was hesitant to sell the property would still, it'd still be closed today. That property would still be shut down today if I did not negotiate an unfettered access to the existing pump and treat facility, which is still operating to this very day on the property, on the Federal Street property that abuts Water Hill Street. So there's still a pollution control treatment center at the facility. It's a pump and treat that's operated to this very day by General Electric. And so in that negotiation, we gave them unfettered access and also unrestricted condition that the property would be maintained in its entirety, it wouldn't be chopped up, so to speak. You'll notice that the property has, it's an uneven site. We had to raise that entire site almost six feet. Well, we did raise it six feet for Market Basket to be constructed because we had to cap the entire site. There were other conditions that we also, I also negotiated in good faith to be a good steward, um, in the town. I, I'm, I'm married to a Lynn girl. I made, some rules were set when I wanted to do business and she said, you won't do anything to embarrass me or the city and you'll only do something that helps the community and the whole. And I've lived by that to this very day and that's 35 years of consecutive marriage to the same woman. I'm very happy with that. This site has other conditions that we, that I had agreed to. I get the phone calls, I make the decisions, I reach the conclusions that I think are in the best interest of, as a community, the trust and the city of Lynn. So even though you heard that Alan said that they stopped work, uh, in the evening, the tow lot runs 24 hours a day. When there's a snow emergency, I don't tell them they got to shut down. I don't tell them what gates to come in. I, I open it up to them and I let them run it. And I charge the city zero. Absolutely zero. I can tell you that through four different zoning changes and through different administrations, I've never once thought selfishly about what I could take advantage of from the city of Lynn. It appears quite the opposite. I heard the letter that you read. It's disappointing. It's also though understandable that the city wants to see the property developed. And even though I've gone through several administrations and quite a few different zoning, um, uh, uses, uh, zoning, uh, bylaws, the use has never changed from the time that I bought the parcel. It's always consistently been used for a parking lot to the city of Lynn. And so I would think that if the city of Lynn wanted to use something and they wanted to do it and we don't charge anything for them, that the use isn't allowed use. They wouldn't want to break their own rules. And I felt comfortable in doing that. I felt comfortable that the fence was moved 25 feet away from the fire station to allow the fire, fire department to park vehicles and to put their trailer for, um, training equipment on the property that's owned by 40 Federal Realty Trust. And I'm very troubled that there's a chance that this use that's been in, that has been consistently uninterrupted operating. I think they call it a pre-existing non-conforming grandfathered use. I've heard that before. And I look at this and I'm saying, there's nothing, nothing that's changed. Absolutely nothing. Now, do I want this new zoning bylaw that requires research and development lab space to, um, produce results? Absolutely. But right now, we have a 25% vacancy rate in life science, in research and development. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that by zoning it already now, we're not prepared for the next wave that comes at us. We absolutely are ready to do it and we want to do that. There isn't anything that we're at odds or disagreement with. The only thing that's happening right now is, is this pre-existing non-conforming use, which has been going on by the city from, for decades, now all of a sudden not allowed because we're doing it. And I know that there are other budget constraints. So even though I was allowing the carnival to use it once a year, I've now made it available to them for four times. But that use won't be allowed either. And that's how the funding happens for fireworks. When they need a road race, they park cars there. I don't want to say no. I've always allowed it. When the fire department wants to train their new, uh, when new equipment comes in, I make that parking lot available for them to drive around in it. I've always been the person that's been contacted by the city directly. I have the authority to make those decisions. I work in the best interest of both parties. I'm not Solomon, but I try to act like one. I try to be a good man. I try to treat the city fairly and equitably. And I believe at this particular point, the only option that we had that Sam has mentioned is we need to come to you for relief. Not because we're doing something different, but because we're continuing to do something that's the same. Do my, would I accept the sense that provision, something that says, okay, this comes to an end at some point in the future? Sure. Some reasonable accommodation from you folks. Something that you could come up with that is not heavy-handed or free-handed, but something that's even-handed. As Sam, it could be maybe a two-way street. I politely respectfully ask that you consider these things that we've done as goodwill in behalf of 40 Federal Realty Trust. And we'd like to continue to be able to do those things. However, whatever the decision of the board is, that's the decision of the board. I don't take being in front of you lightly. I'm, I'm here respectfully, but I also believe that what, everything that we've described here is truthful and accurate and is complete, not a portion of it. And so I hope that the context, the way I provided, um, is helpful in reaching a positive outcome for us and that, um, uh, if there's any questions that you have, I'm more than happy to be able to answer them for you. Do my best to try to answer them.
Yeah, we have questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Patios. So we'll, we'll go to start with some questions.
Yeah. I, I would like to know what is, based on EDIC's letter. It says that several years ago, when market basket project was completed and agreement was made that city would complete infrastructure improvements and subsequently the lot in question would be developed. What does that mean? Okay. The city clearly expecting this lot to be developed and they haven't developed.
And, and you might, that's a reasonable question. And if you take a look at the fact that there's been four zoning changes that dictates what can be built, it might be as difficult for you to understand that as it is for me. But market, market conditions dictate what a developer builds. We wouldn't build something that's not in demand, even though it might be allowed. You might be able to build an ice cube factory in Normal, Alaska, but you wouldn't do it. And we'd like to build, not spec build, but build to suit. So if there's something that can be built, the recommendation is made to use Cushman and Wakefield. We're reaching out to Cushman and Wakefield to see what tenants are available to do research and development based on the current zoning that was just enacted days ago. Prior to that, the use was very different. And so though we might've gone down a path to do something that was previously allowed, it's turned entirely in a different direction.
And that's. Was that the zoning or Mr. Cameron made, perhaps you knows? Was that the zoning or was it the planning, planning department that made that change? Well, I mean, I understand the zoning has been changed recently. Oh, the zoning is not. Okay. Okay. Did, did planning at any point ever, ever, and ever, ever have an overlay or something happening in that area that you did not want to have?
I would agree that it has great potential for development.
So it's, it's always been on the, in the back of your head that that was going to be a developed property?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Can I just elaborate? The, um, the agreement that they mentioned, was that a written agreement between parties? Between the city and?
Staring at, were you contract between the city and the entity?
It was a gentleman's agreement.
Yep. Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Olson?
I, I guess, uh, do you know if there's a written agreement or?
No, it's always been if I receive a phone call, can we use the lot again? And that's what, the only thing that.
The, the question I have is on the development of the property. Whether there was an agreement that it would be developed is there's, is that part of the approval, the initial, was it a special permit?
No, it was a, the market basket was a by right development.
Okay.
Um, this other parcel is a little different. It's a, when you look at the zoning bylaw and the setbacks that are required on this particular parcel, because it's, it's basically a four-sided lot. When you take that and you look at the setbacks in both directions and you look at the pack, you're going to wind up with a very small building in the building in the middle. So we're going to have to be in front of you for, for a special permit, for dimensional special permit, because I think that when you take a look at the application of this, you'll find that the building is going to be put in a shoebox. We're going to have to come in front of you for, for relief on that.
For the current proposed zoning or the zoning right now that we have?
Pretty much for, well, the proposed zoning for sure.
Yeah.
Because our, you, you're not going to have a one-story R and D facility there. You're going to have a multi-story building there, especially when you take in the requirements for parking on that site to, for all the people that should, that would be employed there. So you really have to make a tall building to be able to accommodate the parking around it. That's, that's unavoidable. The, the, the use of the tow lot going somewhere else, I have no control over that. I, I've done it only because I was asked to do it and I thought it was a convenient place to do it in the middle of town, um, where public transportation was available. And, and quite frankly, um, I'm not saying I'm relieved, but you found another place to go. So now I, I've heard that officially. But the fire department is there 24/7, 365, and it has been. And I think that's probably maybe even a more important use or certainly as equally important, if not more important. I don't know if they've made arrangements for that to change. I, I, first time I'm hearing of other changes.
So I saw Mr. Gillering prefers Mr. Luana.
And so the, the trust, the trust still owns or controls lots one, two and three?
Yes.
Certainly.
Yes.
At least the market basket.
Yes. Uh, there's also, there used to be the Lynn, Lynn Italian Club that was, that went into the parcel. There was some parking at the far end that was, we, uh, land that was carved off and given to the city for a roundabout.
Yep.
And there was also some other, uh, arrangements that were made to take some of the trucks off of Water Hill Street when they were backing into old neighborhood to be able to make the, um, uh, the street less congested. So we've made some allowances there. All of this has been in good faith to be able to improve the wellbeing of the area. This is not in any way to slight disrespect or in any way impose some unfair uses or, or ignore cur, common courtesies. To the contrary, I think that we've gone beyond the pale to be able to be good to the city and to the neighbors and, and the community overall. I don't know what else. I'd be happy to answer any other questions or anything that.
Can you, um, tell me about this, the pump out facility? Where on the lot is it?
Sure. Um, it's approximately, the pump and treat facility is on, on, on the Federal Street lot, just about in the middle of the lot, but at the Water Hill end of the street, at the Water, Water Hill end of the property. So you would actually access it off of Water Hill Street and it's continuously operated from the time of the releases and the contamination, um, by General Electric. And again, the reason that this transaction occurred with General Electric has been because of the language that I created to allow them unfettered access. We pay the bill, they operate the station.
And presumably that would be maintained for empty to use.
I gave them 10 years with a 10-year option and then the right to extend yearly after that. So it's in, it's in perpetuity until it shuts down. When that land, when the pump and treat shuts down, the, they will take the building down and the land will revert control wise back to us. But, um, it's, it was, it was necessary to do it to get the control of the property.
And that's part of remediation of the parcel?
Yes, it's still being remediated now. General Electric has taken, um, I would say that they're very cautious of how they release properties and it was a, that was, that was three years of negotiations to get that transaction completed in the end. Sure.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's anybody else in favor of the petition that would like to speak? Anybody else who would like to speak in favor of the petition? Seeing none, is there anybody who would like to speak against the petition?
All right. Yep. Mr. Caldwell here.
Todd, yes. Hold up.
I answered any questions? Good evening. So first of all, thank you. You volunteer your time and do a great job. I don't come before the board very often. Jim Cowdell, I'm in charge of EDIC. I've been in that position for 20 years now. Um, and thank you. So Sam Bytally, uh, one of the most talented lawyers that I know, he does a great job. Charlie Patios, I've worked with him for a long time, couple of, probably two decades now. And a gentleman. Alan, uh, known him for many years, honest as the day is long and a good guy. All right. None of them are the owners of the property. So let's start there. They're not the owners of the property. Charlie, when asked that question, you asked that question, he's the manager, not the owner. So when, uh, Market Basket was done, this is therapeutic, this statement, nothing to do with this case, we gave Market Basket a 20-year tax incentive. They recently filed for a tax abate, which I think is an insult to the city. They're very important to the city, but really aggravated that we gave a tax incentive and they still filed for an abatement. This parking lot, um, the prior mayor, Matt Mayor Nicholson, Mayor McGee, uh, and myself made a deal, a gentleman's agreement, shook hands with Aditya Demoulin representing Market Basket. We would do one point, I think it's $1.6 million or $1.5 million in infrastructure improvements and return that lot would be developed. There is an AOL on that lot, but that's a smokescreen. That, that does not preclude development from happening. It can happen, should happen and will happen. So that was over five years ago. So when Mr. Patios talks about R and D being 22% or whatever the number was, if I own that property, right, and I wanted to develop it, I would hire a real estate broker. Like, wouldn't that be the first thing that would be done? They've never hired a broker. I would market the property. It's never been marketed, not one day. It's not marketed, there's no broker involved, there's no materials. If you called up and say, can you tell me about that property? Charlie would talk about it. There's no printed materials that would, would encourage you to invest in our city. About 20,000 cars pass that lot every day, every day. This wouldn't be done anywhere. Why would it be done here in Lynn? In the middle of the busiest street other than the Linway and that the city has. The development team ha, uh, is made up of the mayor, as I said in the letter, the Wad Council, who happens to be the council president, is against this use. This is a bad use, right? Very bad use. And I, and I fought this battle many times. As, as the city comes up with a vision, and that's not a negative, it's a positive. When the city comes up with a vision for a different use, there's always kicking and screaming, right? Mass merchandise on the Linway, the only place in the world that had a flea market, if you stood on the roof, you'd have a great view of the Atlantic Ocean, right? Kicking and screaming that we were changing the vision. Today, there's a $130 million development there. Next door to it will be a $450 million development. This is what we should be talking, we shouldn't be talking about carnivals. We shouldn't be talking about the sturge of cars. We should be talking about the owner who's not in this room. We should be meeting with the owner and the mayor and the council president and the development team and working on developing this land, not talking about storing cars, talking about developing the site. And we're not doing that. So there's many reasons where we, we hope that you deny this. I represent the development team. Chris Paul is here from ISD. I think he would offer some tremendous insight that might help you with the decision. You have any questions? I may help you.
Thank you. Uh, since, uh, just a quick question.
Yes.
In terms of the property owner and trying to establish a line of communication with the property owner, has that, since when has that sentence happened in order to be able to collaborate? be able to collaborate or be able to do something?
I, I asked my, my friend, Mr. Patios, who the owner was four times at the last meeting last week, he, eight times said, I'm the manager. I don't know who the owner is. He won't tell us. Sam won't produce a legal document. I don't know who the owner is. I assume who the owner is. I don't know that for a fact, though. It's very frustrating.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
The 1.656 package, is that, is that City Capital, is that Mass Works?
It was, yep, it was Mass Works grant. We applied and in the application, it clearly stated that, um, this was being done so that development could happen at this site. Clearly stated that in the application. Thank you. And I, as I said, I think Chris could answer and give some insight for, for the board.
Would you say that now, because the property now is profitable, that they want to continue to use it this way and still be developing? I don't understand why they're not marketing it either.
I don't either. I don't know that. I don't know if the owner knows that this deal has been made. I have no idea. You have the manager entering into a lease with a private business owner, the owner's not on any of these documents. Um, I, you know, if, if I were one of those two gentlemen, I would want this passed because it's profitable for both of them. It's a negative for the city of Lynn though. And as far as like, we, we certainly are not going to be held hostage, I can say that clear. You know, holding the carnival, holding the toll lot, uh, we will find a new spot for the toll lot, we will find a new location for the carnival. We cannot accept poor uses. We are better than that. We have a vision, we can do better. You know, this should have been marketed for the past five years to come up here tonight after five years of doing zero and saying, we will hire a broker. Where has that been for five years and where is the owner?
I have a quick question in terms of, so is the city, from, from the discussions that have happened at EDIC and the vision Lynn, does this mean that if the petition were to be denied and that were the case, is the city then prepared and already okay with the fact that parking of fire trucks and fire department and those types of uses would be gone or would be restricted or more difficult? That's, that has already been taken into consideration?
We're prepared for everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Question, yes. Um, can I just ask, has zoning enforcement started on this property? It seems like the use has already been started before we have approved anything.
So I'm Chris Poole in the Boardman's Office of the City. I said, I'm on this property because of ongoing significant change. Thank you. The ongoing significant change in what's happening there. Um, I'm a little reluctant, I'm not here to argue, I'm here just to state facts, but it's going to sound like argument because it's so different from what has been presented to you. The number of cars, I'd say estimates, 78,000. This is a satellite image of the lot, taken on April. If you just did a random sample of that, I guess 798 right up to there. The idea that there's only three trailers there, I've sat there for 10 minutes and watched five or six come and go. And the issue with the trailers is, we were down there with, uh, with Lieutenant Hunter from the police department, is that when they're leaving this property, they're going onto Center Street, some of them try to go straight down towards Marion, can't make the corner. So then you're backing all the way up Center Street, then they'll try to go left on that cut through. Right here, they have to drive left of center to make that. So there's traffic coming this way. I've observed them unloading cars in the streets on Federal and Center Street. We've talked to them several times, asked them to stop. There've been some improvements, but we asked them for a police detail, police suggested it. There's never been a police detail. Um, and the issue with these trailers, I think if you'd like to see it, but they block up an entire name of Center Street. It is school buses trying to unload jits there, this is a lot of apartment building there, there's all kinds of other things happening there. So the idea that it's only a few cars and it's occasional, this is a significant change in any of the uses that have been made. There's nothing, the issue has never been out there and the car carrier is the biggest problem as far as on the public ways around there. Um, I can't speak to the issue of trash and things like that because of the several vehicles I was near. I asked to tour the lot, I was denied access to the people who are working down there, so I can't talk about that. No. It's a significant problem too, because I'm trying to figure out who's doing what. There's a number of companies down there, so whatever board is the issue, Avis has no control over the companies bothering the stock carriers, and I'm going to identify it as two or three different companies that are driving these trailers in and out. So whatever they know, whatever Mr. Patios or anyone else tells them to do, it's their own. Because this is a separate company from Avis, a separate company from everybody, and that's the concern down there. You have a lot of kids who live on that street, you have a lot of cars, it's a very, very busy area. And what I've seen repeatedly are ca, car carriers who cannot negotiate in that area. I've spoken to drivers driving these car carriers down there, they cannot negotiate in that area. So that's a significant concern. So those are my observations as Boardman's Office. I have video if you'd like to see it, but you can just imagine how narrow those streets are with car carriers, unloading cars in the street, backing up down Center Street like 200 yards, trying to take a left, driving left of center, unloading on Federal Street. It's really a significant, significant change from anything that's ever occurred there in the history of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Any questions?
So, just a quick, so you, you're saying that the car carrier period or volume of car carriers is relatively phenomenal?
Yeah, it's never happened there before as far as I know. Yep.
What was it being used as before this New Year's? Was it just cars being stored? It's not necessarily free to, but for a potential?
Sure.
Before you, um, went into a room with Avis, what was it done before? How many cars were there?
Several hundred, but not as many as there now. We, we were, we have a lot of them today. Well, let me think of that. No dispute where we described, the way to do this, then it's still.
Same, you're going to come up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, speaking of praise, you know, it's that, uh, there is no solution but the death penalty, that there is no cooperation. All of those things are not the reality. The reality is that when those complaints were made, they were addressed. You've heard Mr. Janeski explain how they dealt with the car carrier issue. You've heard Mr. Janeski explain in terms of how the operation has its ebbs and tides. And when did we learn about the car lot not, no longer being in? This evening, strangely enough, that they say that the Toga Company is going to go find some other place. Well, maybe they will. But we, we were talking about, how did we get there? That's four months of every year that the, the city's parking casket. So there's no question that there have been legitimate complaints, that, but they, the real issue is, were they addressed? Were they addressed immediately? How were they addressed? But the largest question of all is, is this really this operation an impediment to some future development of the lot, which has had four different zone districts imposed on it by the city, decides, well, we'll have industrial because that will encourage R and D, then though, let's have R and D. And, and I go back and say to you that what you're going to wind up with, because it is privately owned, is an empty lot until somebody comes forward. There was a proposal that I knew of and that I discussed with Charlie and Charlie knew of, Death Israel was looking for a facility. They, they spoke to Charlie. I, I knew because they spoke to me. Uh, they went and talked with the city and we never heard back from them. Would have been a great use, but we can't compel people to come to the city. It's, it's an overall environment, it's an atmosphere. It's, it's, I understand vision, especially architects are big on vision, but we got to deal with what's reality, what's on the ground today, what can we achieve today? And in the interim, let me just address on the tax issue. There's a tip I believe on the, um, Market Basket. Uh, if you, if you believe that this parking lots of this site, first of all, it's not seven acres because that includes Federal Street, it's much smaller. You think that this piece of land with its current land use classifications worth 3.6 million dollars? Well, in the world of abatements, which you're entitled to have, there's nothing that says you can't challenge. Taxes are based on valuation, valuation. It's not how much you pay in taxes, which by the way, this lot pays about $73,000 in taxes. It's not what you pay in taxes, it's how they value it, because what they value it at results in what you pay in taxes. So what you're talking about here is that if it has no uses that are allowed, if it has what they call the capitalization method, as I have an asset and I, I, I deserve to get a particular return on it, that it's really chump change what they're getting in terms of 3.6 million valuation. So they have a right to, to file for an abatement for overvaluation. And with respect to that, I, I couldn't believe it when I pulled the card and saw the, the assessors have it, uh, land use classification, uh, they don't, as you know, unfortunately sometimes to me, they don't, they don't have the right to determine zoning. They, they go out and look at what they see and they base the valuation on those principles, not zoning principles. But there is, the Department of Revenue has what's called a land use code. So they, they classify this as, I think they had a field guide here, but at the end of the day, the thing that struck me wasn't the, the, uh, what they called it, it was the value. Uh, and with respect to that, uh, the city says that this law, as it is right now, not, not future development, that this law is worth 3.6 million dollars. And I would suggest to you that, uh, somebody's going to have a hell of a good case to make that it's not generating the sufficient revenue to warrant under what they call the capitalization method, even the amount of taxes they're paying now. But, uh, this one stumped me. I, I'm familiar with some of these, the Department of Revenue has these land use classifications, usually a business uses in the 300s, residential uses in a hun, this one is 403. I g, I think it says accessory land. Um, so somehow the assessors have determined it's accessory to something, right? Uh, and, and they may be thinking it's accessory to across the street, I don't know, but this is the field guide.
I, I have a question, unrelated to this. It's been a little bit on top of my mind that if the city has tried to establish, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Patios more than you, Mr. Vitali, but if the city has been trying to come to an agreement, Mass Works grant has been done and there has been talk with the state about an expectation for development at the site, and there was good faith and handshaking to be able to move things forward. I'm, I'm curious why the owner has been such a big issue. Why, why hasn't?
That's, that's an excellent question. Because, but first of all, they say as a matter of law.
Yeah.
That's totally irrelevant to what we're here for.
Okay.
Number two, the record owner is the 40 Federal Street LLC. I gave you some reasons about the liability and the difference between an owner and an operator when it comes to forever being on the hook for the contamination that GE left on the site. And that part of what Mr. Patios surprisingly didn't express to you is, he's probably the only person alive that had the ability to take GE and the DeMullis family and put the deal together. And right now, this is no mystery, I talked to the attorney for Market Basket who said he sat in meetings with Mr. Cowdell, uh, with people from the mayor's office, he represents the DeMullis family. But I, I don't fault the DeMullis family for insulating themselves from unlimited liability because of the character of the soil or the site or what, what could come from it. But, and right now, uh, he had difficulty because when you say who the owner is, there's a question at Market Basket, who the owner is. So that, but it's not a military secret and it's absolutely irrelevant. The real question is, does this stand in the way of future development? And I think the answer to that is absolutely no. If, if somebody shows up today and says, we want to build a museum of science there, these guys are gone in 60 days. You think that they can build a five-story building in 60 days? You think that they can get all the approvals that would be required in 60 days? End of story. So what we're really talking about is, what are they doing now and why is it suddenly offensive now? In my personal opinion, it's to spur the development. And, and, you know, I'll, I'll bet you that the people who are sitting there and the people who are sitting somewhere at Market Basket would love that. They would love to have highest and best use. They would love to have life science. Unfortunately, they don't control the market. And so what we're talking about is what has gone on, what's going to go forward. And at the end of the day, my greatest fear is that you, you drive to Market Basket, it's thousands of lenders do, and maybe 400 people who are the face, the new face of Lynn, who go to work, and you'll see an empty lot.
May I? Yeah. Thank you. They have big interests in the parcel, but not the kind of interests that I think the city would want, that anybody, any of us would want. I don't think we need another Dollar General. I don't think we need a Quick Loop. I don't think we need a fast food restaurant at those, those, those locations. I describe the uses that they want as grinding filet mignon to make hamburger. It's not the best use. And the only thing, and gentlemen, I have respect for all of you, but the city and the economic development did have a grand presentation, which is heavily advertised, not just to one, but to many. Uh, trolley buses were brought in, people were put on it. It wasn't just brought to one property, it was brought to several properties in the city. And so to say that nothing's been done, though they did a lion's share of the work, isn't the fact that the property has been ignored or hidden or restricted or not, offers not welcome. It's to the contrary. The right use needs to come. If the staying power of holding this property, paying the taxes, approaching $100,000 a year for that lot, if ownership did not have the resources to be able to keep that undeveloped so that the right opportunity comes along and that the right thing happens, then, then I think that's a second-class operation. Jim alluded to the fact that there was a flea market down there. The flea market didn't get there without the opportunity to come in front of licensing and to have a permission by the city of Lynn. But the use changed, and so it took a long time for development to actually outpace the revenue that was coming from flea market and COVID helped that. We don't have that impediment here. It's raw, it's ready, it's going to be developed, it's going to come in front of you, we want it developed. But to say that somehow we're going to change the market or the market demand or the demographics in the city is beyond my ability. I do not have a magic wand to do those things. But I can promise you, if I did, I would do it. I just ask you for a little bit of patience. The use has not changed. It's a pre-existing, non-conforming grandfathered use, which is what falls in your preview. That's what we're asking for. Ownership is not an issue in it. We're legal, we pay our taxes, we're, we're, we file with the state, we file with the federal government, everything is above board. And I can promise you that Sam's assessment of what's happening is trying to spur development by a prod, in this case, an electric prod. But I can understand why it's being done, it doesn't feel very good. But I, I, I will respect the decision of the board. Thank you.
Quick question. Has the prop, has the property ever gone on market?
Yes.
Where was that?
The city of Lynn marketed it, um, I would say about two years ago.
Two years ago, okay.
Yep. First, thank you. Okay. It's a pretty direct question, right? Has the property ever gone to market? The answer's no. They've never marketed it. CoStar, which is the, um, what all the real estate brokers use.
Yeah.
The city has CoStar, never been on CoStar, not once. Hasn't, broker has not been hired. It's a simple question, it could have been answered. A broker hasn't been hired, it's never been marketed. He talks about marketing. The city put a development tour together, right? The city did what the owner should be doing. We brought developers to the site and said, look at this site. We did that. But your question's really easy. Has it ever been up for sale, right? Zero, never. And I'll tell you why the question on the owner is important. We wouldn't be, the mayor tried for almost 12 months with me to meet with Aditya DeMullis, because everybody tries to tell us that he's the owner, right? 12 months, couldn't get a meeting. Finally, he sent his son to the meeting to meet with the mayor. So it's, it's, it hasn't been a good relationship. Um, I asked a week ago, at the request of the mayor, for some document, just some document showing us the owner of the property. I'm still waiting for that. So your answer was a pretty easy answer, which is, it's never been for sale. It's not up for sale, it's not being marketed, it hasn't been marketed in the last five years since the city spent 1.6 million. There's no deed for the property? There's no owner, you know, it's, it's in a trust and good luck trying to find out who that is. If you can find that out, I'd, I'd appreciate it. If you can find that out, I'd appreciate it. So the property will never be sold. That's a clear, I can state that this evening, the property shall not be sold. Shall is a big word. It will be developed and will be the developers. So, but the property cannot be sold. There are deed restrictions that are on the property relevant to the AOL, the pump and treat. And anybody that's going to buy that property is going to come here and I would assume they're going to get a bank loan. And they're going to come down there, they're going to do environmental testing. And they're going to see that there's an active pump and treat facility. It is much more complicated than saying the property has not been sold. There's so much below the surface that, A, I don't think it's relevant, but I can promise you one thing, there is a lot, a lot of General Electric layers and years of it. There's been three General Electric operating plants in the city. Two of them, I led the acquisition on. I'm very familiar with General Electric. The other one is the gear plant. So I can promise you that I'm able to get the job done. I am also a commercial licensed broker. So I'm active in what I do, but I don't waste time in misleading opportunities with sites that have not reached their maturity yet. The site can be developed and it will be developed to the best interest and the highest and best use. But it won't be a Dollar General, it won't be a Taco Bell, it won't be things that, that we didn't want in the waterfront when we put them there. We won't want them there in 10 years if I put them there now. It's not about making money today, it's about the long-term investment and doing what's right for the city. And that is the way that I, that's, yes.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, no.
In terms of the state of the soil today, could the property be developed today without further re?
No, no. We'd have to, we'd have to. So you have to put a vapor barrier down. Unless you're, parking lot, no. But you can see the next door, we're talking about 100 feet between the two parcels. The parcel next door had to be elevated six feet. So the cap underneath was maintained, fill was brought in, a vapor barrier is put in, and then a building on top of it. This site is not as bad as that site. But you don't, you're not next to Chernobyl and growing tomatoes. So what we want to do is the right thing, we want to be responsible. I want research and development to come. It's not here yet, it's probably several years away. But that doesn't mean that we can't be prepared for it and market to it. But right now with the vacancy rate that there is, there aren't any tickets for buildings that are already constructed. Why would we want to build something that no one wants that's already up? And so that's what research and development is obligating us to.
So I just have a question on the plan that was submitted. It says proposed parking and vehicle storage. And I heard a discussion of what's going on. There's a number of different companies that come in and do different things. I hear that there's carrier trucks that come in and they're pretty big because I experienced firsthand being stuck on Boston Street when one got stuck trying to pull out of that side street. Hadn't to find my way out of the neighborhood after an hour. So this doesn't really have a plan on how to deal with that. When I think of large vehicles, there's turning movements for those vehicles, right? Front wheels go one way, the back wheels travel a different path. So if everything else wasn't an issue, I would want to see a plan on how these trucks negotiate the turns to get onto the property and how do they safely get out of the property to get into the travel lanes of the surrounding streets. That's a formal plan. That's not what this is. This is just pavement and a note saying we're going to store vehicles and parking. Delivering a number of vehicles with a carrier truck is a specific industry delivery method that requires some forethought and planning on how that's going to be safely be done in the neighborhood. This plan right now doesn't do that. I mentioned, one of the users says somebody comes in and preps cars on the site. What do they do to prep those cars? Are they washing cars on the site?
No.
They're just peeling off material? I would want to have them go before the board so I understand what they actually do and what we're permitting. There's a third person he mentioned that does work here. I don't know what they do. So I don't know what I'm approving. So to me, this plan in front of me is totally not sufficient for me to make a decision on what's actually going to happen, how it's going to happen, safely happen. I've been out on the street in September when school opened and this traffic on both sides of the road, on Federal Street and Center Street in the morning. There's no room for traffic. If a truck gets stuck there, the whole city's in congestion. People that live across the street, when do those vehicles get delivered? Are they being delivered just during the day? Do they come in at night? A big truck that pulls in, it shakes the house. It backs up and makes big noises, right? It has to have a backup. So, you know, you mentioned how they swing around the site, but I don't see how they come in and out of the site. The roads aren't, the plan doesn't show the existing roads, it shows the old roads and the old property. So for me to even consider that, I'd need a formal plan. If you're doing a proposal, there's a planning board plan, there's a vision of what that is. This isn't it.
I understand. The three companies that were mentioned, I've asked enough questions to I believe maybe provided a little color. There's one company that's strictly for security of the vehicles. The vehicles are checked in, the vehicles are checked out. The company's responsible for the inventory, where they go and how, and so forth. So they're, call it the management, if you will, of the operation. There's the drivers of the vehicles that take the vehicles and move them back and forth. And then the last one, the third one, that seems to be a little bit unclear, where the vehicles come in, there's a window sticker, it says Chevrolet and the kind and the equipment and the price. That's taken off, that's folded up, that's put in the glove compartment. The plastic is taken off either the wheels or the hood, sometimes the seat. They're disposed of, they put the plastic bag and they go out with the vans. I've seen that, that's how I know. And a license plate's attached, but there's no washing, there's no engine work, there's no, there's none of that. It's simply, I guess what you could do with a screwdriver in your own hands. You're putting the license plates on, you're taking the plastic off. Someone's managing the vehicles that are coming in, matching the title with the registration and that goes on there. So because of the amount of vehicles. But to your point regarding the vehicles entering the lot, the vehicles come in down Federal into that side street, which doesn't have a name, at least I don't think it does, and into the Center Street lot. They come all the way in, fire station's here, and they do a turnaround, they'll come back out. They don't back up.
I appreciate your time to explain to us what happens. I don't want to hear it. I want to see it. Okay, so if you were going to submit a plan, it needs to be on plan.
Okay.
That's, that's all I'm saying. And whether or not we actually want a plan, I don't know. I don't know where this board is going, so.
Well, there's a stipulation that you want to put on there, that you want certain things. I mean.
I just think we don't have enough information. At least I feel, I don't have enough information to make a decision.
Okay, I understand.
Any other questions before, I know that it's getting late and we have another case that we also have to take into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say, I just, I think it's pretty clear to me that this is a completely different use than what, what has been there in the past and what has been presented to us as having been in the past. Just because cars are on the lot, I don't see that as necessarily meaning that this use is in line with that. I say this half joking, but if I have a dog in my house, that doesn't mean I could have a kitten. There's a lot of other things that go into operating the kind of business that it sounds like you are, you are running and have been running. And the fire department, ox cars there or during a snowstorm, there's some cars there that got towed. I, I'm sympathetic to the city's, the city's argument that, that there should be some movement on the site. And I do think that this would cut against what the city is attempting to do with the visioning, the current zoning that they're working through. And I also will say, I, I'm, I think that this, this use is a significant enough change from what was happening there before, it sounds like. I didn't observe it personally, that it appears to me that there, it, it's pretty clear to me that it would have required relief before operating a, this type of a business. And I don't know where the city is with zoning enforcement, but that's, those are my feelings on it. I do think that relief prior to starting this would have been in line and I would have been more, I would have loved to have seen a plan prior. I was in that circle this morning and a huge truck came through and did need to stop and back up. So that, those are my feelings. I really do wish we had our eyes on this before this was actually taking place. And that's what I'll say.
I see Attorney Lamont. All right. Final round of questions. Are there any questions going once, going twice? All right, we are done. I'm going to present, and I'm fully sympathetic to, remember Christopher mentioned in terms of balancing out between what the city is trying to achieve and the time that has been spent and resources, the current use, which is relatively in the same vein, but it's definitely a different change, both in volume and intensity and safety. So I'm just going to present a motion to deny this petition. If there's any seconds in here, we have a second from Ms. Cowitz and we can have a roll call.
Member Christopher.
Yes.
Member Maggio. Member Olson.
Yes, is presented.
Member Krawitz.
Yes, to the nine.
And Member Lopez and Indus.
Yes, to the nine. All right. That concludes the business for case 10110. Okay, so we're resuming now with our next case. Case number 1011116122, Union Street.
116122 Union Street, Gibson Place, Lynn, Massachusetts. Also number 082615016 and 082615022. Fidelina Garcia, Manager Trustee, 116 Union Street LLC and 9 Green Street Realty Trust, 108 Naham Street, Apartment 1, Lynn, Massachusetts. Our attorney, Samuel A. Vitale. To vary pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 48, Section 10, the provisions of the Lynn, City of Lynn Zone Ordinance to allow parking for a mixed-use building with street-level stores, three, and upper level of upper-floor residential apartments, four, with the required number of spaces, but not all on the same lot. As the building, as the building and not in conformance with design standards, Section 9.4 Zone Ordinance in the B District and R2 District, the variance request requires the zoning order of appeals to specifically find the owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures, especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance.
All right, thank you. We'll go with the petitioner.
Thank you, Attorney Vitale. This is Fidelina's very patient. And she is the owner of both properties and she's here. And so how did we get here? We went to the city council. This is in the business in the R2 District. And it's an existing building, it had a vacant second floor, had street-level businesses historically for years. The city was encouraging the development of residential properties. We went in and got a special permit of which I had five or six copies here. Which allowed the, we needed a special permit because the R2, the central business district, we just wouldn't allow it as a matter of right now, one. And number two, there is not required parking. But when we started again, the zone ordinance and the map were different. So the new ordinance came into effect. One of the things that were changes that we would be in compliance because one of the changes they're making in the design standards is that before, you couldn't park within five feet of the property line or the street line. They're obliterating that. So, so we came up with the requisite number, but this is how we reasoned and did it. There are four residential units. So the lot immediately to the rear on this property, we put four spaces, four spaces that comply with the design standards, the then-designed standards. And then Fidelina owns the next property. And for a residential apartment house use, the old ordinance said you could park within 200 feet, and these are adjacent. And in effect, they are in the same ownership because she owns both entities. And then behind that, if you've been down the streets, the St. Joseph's Church parking lot. And we actually have a handshake arrangement, the church is there on Sundays, but why, so when we meet the requisite number, and how I arrived at the requisite number was I took six, that's 1.5 of the four units, and then I took the square footage of the three storefronts and applied the then-existing Parkinson's and I came up with the right number. But I couldn't get the right number on the lot. Immediately behind the building, attached to the building, but I could get it on that lot and then the other lot that she owns. So, excuse me?
Where is the other lot?
It's called Zero Gibson Place. It's immediately to the rear of the lot we're talking about.
Oh, okay, so it's adjacent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's adjacent to the lot that's adjacent to the building, yes. Yeah. And then behind that is where St. Joseph's is, the parking lot. And so we think we satisfy the parking requirement and we did get this approval. And the residential units were welcomed by the board council or by the city council who unanimously voted to allow us to have the mixed use. But obviously, we need to satisfy parking. Now, the other point about the parking is that unlike residential use where people are there potentially 24/7, the businesses aren't there 24/7. And there's on-street parking on Union Street in front of these. And some of these businesses are the kind that, I'm going to be in front of the traffic commission tomorrow on some of this, is that a lot of people, you know, stop, run in, get what they want and leave. They're not, they're not all-day shoppers. They're not people that are staying for a lengthy period of time. But we do have the requisite number if you allow us to use that lot that's adjacent. And as far as, let me just say that the, there are easements, this goes back to like the 1800s. I mean, and Fidelina also owns two other properties across the street. One is the Stefania's Restaurant, then was 125 Green Street. So it's not like she's a Johnny Come Lately. She's got a presence in this neighborhood long before she sought the approval to put residential above. It was, it was a good decision in that, you know, businesses would like to be at street level so they can have eye contact with people and have access. And space was empty up above. And at the end of the day, the city gets four more apartments, some of which are going to be affordable. And then we don't want to exacerbate the situation with parking. And so our reasoning was, we got to have space for the first and primarily the residential uses. And that forced us to go to the next lot. And then we calculated and it came out, we had enough space for all uses. So I think that the reason we are here, I thought was twofold. One was, in some of those spaces, we don't have that five-foot buffer. But when I looked at the new zone ordinance, it's gone. But we started under the old and so what we're asking for is not relief of the number number, maybe not relief for the, uh, design standards, uh, because we may not need it, but we may need it, but, but clearly, we don't have all the spaces on the same lot.
So, um, the two, the two properties are adjacent, you're saying. Are you planning on building a building there together, or are they gonna remain two separate properties?
We, we could have filed, but again, it's just a matter, you could file what's called a perimeter plan. But to do that, we'd have to change the ownership, to do a perimeter plan is called lines of existing ownership. So if I own Lot A right now, and I own Lot B, I can create Lot C, but I have to do, I have to have them in the same ownership. And these have been held this way for, for many good reasons, people put properties in trust or LLCs. But at the end of the day, the person who's all of it is right here.
So that my, my concern isn't how, when you own it, my concern would be for, like, sell it, so that the parking we made with the two buildings that you own, the adjacent lot, remain that with the two properties that you own, so that.
Yeah, we can suggest.
Will then be able to have the correct parking.
Yeah, I, I think you could, as I say, I think we satisfy the number on land that's zoned and controlled, and that's the way I read it, and that, um, and once you have more than three units, you can park within 200 feet, or if it's an institution with like the church, they can park like within 1,000 feet.
Can, can you set up, um, where it's technically two different owners by the trust, correct?
They, they, they were in that ownership from the beginning.
Right. So can you set it up as an easement for the property that's gonna be the adjacent parking for the other parcel?
Yeah, well, that's, that's an excellent point. Because in the, oh, yeah, right, in the words of easements, there's what's called the benefited lot and the subjected lot.
Right.
Um, but you, but if you own both lots, you can grant yourself an easement, you can grant the other entity an easement.
Yeah, I would, I would feel more comfortable, because then the lots don't get spit up, split up by ownership, and, and that use is parking.
Formalize that arrangement.
Formalize it, without having to split ownership, you know?
Yeah.
Create the process.
Well, you can do that by being a way of an easement.
If, if you don't wanna do the, uh, the lines, the lines of ownership.
Yeah, I mean, and that's actually, it's not so much a legal decision, it's a business decision.
Right.
But, but it can be achieved in more than one way.
So someone and I wanna provision that, that would happen, whether it's an easement, unless you suggest a better way for that to happen.
Well, that's a good way. Why it's good is you're not telling the strangers, you're telling them yourself.
Correct.
You're following, oftentimes, it's between parties that aren't the same, and then.
Right. So basically, the easement to grant parking is the number of spaces on that particular parcel, adjacent parcel.
Yeah, I think, I think we wound up with two of the residential and then all of the business on the, on the next lot.
Right. Now, if, if, if both parcels are sold and you, you go through making it one later, then that would sort of change the easement, but you'd be allowed.
No, it doesn't change the easement.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me tell you.
So you'd have to basically.
This has been a title mighty, Gibson, it's on Zero Gibson Street, there's a, there's a right-of-way, there's a, a private way.
Yeah.
I mean, we, uh.
I know.
It's, it's the vestige of times before.
Right.
But, but interestingly enough, as I say, Fidelina only acquired that side of the street, she acquired the opposite side.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm familiar with the area.
All right. Any questions, additional questions for Mr. Vitale?
I think, that was the only concern I, I had.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Pete.
Anybody more?
Do favor in a poll.
Poll, so again, the session going once, going twice, going thrice.
Okay, perfect.
I vote to approve the request as long as something is done to maintain the parking for this building.
Whether it be easements.
Whatever needs to be done so that the parking.
In writing, or?
Yeah, yeah, as a stipulation.
Okay, maintain parking for the two buildings.
Yeah.
Written.
We have a second for Member Maggio.
Okay. Maggio, okay. So in writing, you wanna, uh, wanna approve it to maintain the parking for the two buildings in writing, and add it to the, um.
Basically, an easement on the.
An easement, and add it to the decision.
Or equivalent.
Okay.
Allow the parking of one parcel.
So before they pick this up, they'll have to show me?
Yeah.
To show you?
Okay, I would agree.
Okay. Member Maggio?
Yes.
With the stipulation?
Yes.
Okay. Member Christopher?
Yes.
With the stipulation?
Yes.
Member Olson with the stipulation?
Yes, with stipulation.
Member Crowitz with the stipulation?
Yes.
And Member Lopez Hernandez with the stipulation?
The grand stipulation.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
That's great.
All right. Don't believe we have anything else, motion to adjourn, those in favor say, ah, we're done.
Bye, Fidelina.